And then we. Convening our January Library Board meeting, and this is the call to order. And a roll call.
Rusty Felgu.
Present.
Rusty Joshi.
Present.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Present.
Chair Moreau.
Present.
Rusty Petty is absent.
We'll be here soon. Nat is here? Nat is not here.
So Nat has said. Do the consent agenda and he's still trying to. Log in. It keeps crashing on him.
Okay, he's restarting his computer. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll.
He's starting his computer.
We'll, we'll move to the consent agenda then and go back and go back. So we have two items on the consent agenda, the minutes and the. And the just one budget appropriation.
And I believe there's an. Error. Is that correct? In the appropriation. Yes. Okay, so I should pull that.
Okay, okay, we'll move that one. Only. The minutes.
You need a motion for approval? If so, I will move approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we need a roll call vote. We need a roll call vote, sorry.
Rusty Felgu.
Yes.
Rusty Joshi.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Chair Moreau.
Yes. Bob says he's on, but hello? Are you, where?
Oh.
Hi.
Okay, here, I see them.
Oh, no, you just showed up, Bob. You just showed up. Well, your camera is off, perhaps? And you're muted. You're on, your camera is off and you're muted.
Okay, I could, but I can hear you. So all right, just a second.
You're unmuted now. Your camera upper right, little three dots. Perhaps. Okay.
Rusty Petty. Did you want to?
It now is, Bob, you're muted again.
I think.
Okay.
Okay, you should be able to hear me now, but.
I do, we do hear you and. You vote, if you approve, vote to approve the minutes because we're voting to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, there you go.
Okay.
Can you see me now?
No. No.
Well, we can hear you and that's the most important aspect.
That's true. That is true. Okay.
Yeah, but why doesn't the picture work?
I guess you're, maybe your camera's off.
No, I don't think so.
Well.
Within Zoom, did you turn it on?
Yeah, on the, on the upper right hand corner, the little dots. For the lower left hand corner, camera.
Lower left hand corner?
It depends on the device.
Or it would say.
You might have something right next to mute that says stop video or something like that.
Says start video.
Yeah, start. Yeah, that's it.
Present.
Hey.
There you are.
Okay, so our first item on the agenda, or reversing the first two. Was to receive a presentation from our assistant city manager. And have your say Monterey, and we'd better do it while we can still see you now.
There we go. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, super. Sorry about that. I had, had to restart my computer. Zoom kept crashing on me, so. I'm really appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk a little bit about our new. Community engagement platform that we've branded. Have your say Monterey, which has a nice little jingle to it. We've been joking about we need to come up with a radio jingle and. Do a little thingy songy. Something to help promote it, but it's going very well. We launched. The first week in January and it's an online engagement tool where members of the public can. Provide feedback about various topics. That related into the city, both not only programs and projects, but policy issues. So I'll walk through a little bit of, show you the, the website on, on the screen and then talk about the different. Tools that people can use. And when I say people, meaning the tools that as. As departments and such as the, the library and, and museums, for instance, can utilize to gather feedback from the community. What we've said all along is that, that providing different online tools for people to be able to resident citizens, businesses. Library patrons to be able to give feedback help us understand the needs of our community better. We also recognize though that not everyone has access to the internet. So because of that. We know that the tool like Have Your Say Monterey doesn't replace the in-person feedback, feedback that we normally get and receive and engage with. During a non-COVID period, as well as other mediums that, that we use like. Surveys that we mail in, for instance, with the cannabis, topic of commercial cannabis, we're sending out an informational flyer. With return postage prepaid survey to voters in Monterey, so. But we're really excited about the features because we know the majority of citizens do have internet access and have access to use this tool. So. I'm going to take a minute to try to share my screen once the host disables or enables participant screen sharing for me. Great, super. Thank you, Francesca. All right, so this is the layout of our, our website. It's haveyourseymontterey.org. And what we've done here is. Little bit of information about the, the site. People can sign up. When you sign up. That enables you to then engage on the different topics, but there's of course read, read only information to folks just wanted to read about various topics. We've got. For instance, on commercial cannabis, I'll share with you. Some interesting information about. The, the background on the topic of cannabis. We have a news feed that, that. Can inform people about what's, what's happening. We did our first post here on January 7th and continue to provide updates on the topic. We had a town hall meeting on Tuesday. We have another one this, this evening at seven o'clock. We also have a way for people to subscribe for project updates and stay informed about the topic. Key dates. There's a roadmap timeline that. Lets people know where we are in this process. You can embed videos on the site, include documents, highlight who's listening because. Often in city government, there's a faceless city government who's here to serve. But being able to share information about who is actually listening and engaging with the public on the topic is helpful. That's one of the reasons why we've listed. For instance, on the cannabis topic, Hans, myself, others. Who are, who are part of the process. So these are just some of the tools that, that can be used here with, with commercial cannabis as an example. We have a comprehensive survey that. Members of the public can take. They can also give open comments. And, and also ask questions and then allows us to then respond back and, and reply. So what, what I'd like to do for a brief moment is walk through. The tool that we subscribe to, which is called Engagement HQ, and it's a product that was developed. A little over 10 years ago in Australia by a company called Bang the Table. You know, I had a privilege, privilege about six, seven years ago to be part of a local government exchange through the lead of California cities and, and spend some time in Australia. And the way that. Australians engage with the public is, is really interesting. They call these community consultations and it's part of the organizational culture of city governments in Australia to, to connect with. With their community in the decision-making process and Bang the Table was one of the first. Companies, actually the first to innovate and create a platform by which residents can engage in different ways. And, and so they launched in Australia, they expanded to New Zealand. Canada, the UK and, and over the past four years or so have been in the US with the offices in Boulder, Colorado. And we're really lucky. We're, we're the first city in the Central Coast to work with Bang the Table, which is an affordable tool. And looking forward to launching. They're working with Santa Barbara. It's going to be launching pretty soon here too. So this offers a little bit of overview of, of the full spectrum of their tools. I gave you a preview of it. Briefly, I'm going to go to full screen mode so that you can see, actually let me do one better. I'll go into read mode. That way we can zoom in a little bit and you can see. What I'm doing here. So I don't know if you see the screen. One second. I think I may have crashed the software like I did earlier. Hold on. Can't, can't get around that. One second.
You still see the like homepage for the cannabis survey?
You do? Okay, so you don't actually see, let me stop share. And let me just go back to. I think I've crashed my Adobe Acrobat, so just one moment while I go to the task manager. And try to get, try to end task here and. Try this one more time. Okay, here we go. Let me, let me do this. Sorry, for me, I have a hard time with technology like everyone else does.
Log out of the online poker game. That usually does it for me.
How did you know, Bob?
I know the secret name you use when we're playing five card stud.
Yeah. All right, hopefully you all see the screen.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, the, the name of the, the tool again, Bang the Table. Let's keep scrolling down here. I think I might be having a problem sharing the screen. There we go. So hopefully, do you see the, the little icons on the screen? Yeah, okay, super. So, so the way that Bang the Table has put together the different tools, they, they divided up into three different categories. One is an open environment where participants can engage with each other. And where individuals comment, images and ideas are visible to the community. Those examples include a forum where there can be an exchange of comments. People can thumbs up, thumbs down those comments. There's ideas, places. There's. Something they call a mixed environment. These are three tools, stories, guestbook and Q and A. We'll talk about that briefly where participants can see each other's contributions. But there's not a lot of peer back and forth between members of the public. So of thumbing, thumbs up, thumbs down, that type of thing.
So that, is that synchronous or asynchronous?
All, all this is asynchronous. So the way that it works is with any kind of engagement, any kind of tool, you can set a, a start date and an end date. For instance, the survey, we've decided that'll be a six week survey period where people can submit feedback, submit comments. You can close it out when you're done. You can have it be only a one week period of time if you like.
So the forum, for example, I can get on the forum and post something and then you can get on tomorrow and post it. So it's. You're not all on together like a meeting.
And that's one of the benefits and why, why Bang the Table exists is for people to provide feedback at a time that's most convenient for them. The, so the, within the mixed environment, there's the stories, guestbook, Q and A. Within the controlled environment. There's something called the surveys, which is much more comprehensive, similar to what you see with Survey Monkey. And, and or a quick poll, which are just a few, a couple of questions that you can, you can ask. Within the forum tool, you can see here, people can provide. Comments, they can upload images or con, other content. And you can have as many forums as you like per project page. So cannabis is a project page. You can do a project page about youth programming within the library. We can do a project page. About. The library remodel or services that are specific or as broad as you like. And part of the, the forum tool allows for unlimited comments, easy to read replies. And, and social sharing of some of the forum topics that allow people to then, once you have, you post your comment, you can then share it on Facebook, Twitter. Whatever, what, what, what have you. What's nice about this tool that we, we subscribe to through Bang the Table is that there's 24/7 moderation. So. They actually, there's community guidelines to make sure there's no profanity, no inappropriate images or other content that's not on topic. And rather than having city staff be the ones to moderate, the third party, the folks at Bang the Table moderate the content for us. So, which, which is great. A, a really nice tool that a lot of cities have utilized.
Nat.
Yeah.
Along those lines, is it geared towards people identifying themselves by name or confidentially, or is that up to the user?
Yeah, it's up to the user. So a number of users prefer to, to. Have an anonymous username and we, we all respect that. On a controversial topic like cannabis, there are a number of people who've reached out to, to us and say they're not comfortable using their real name, can they use another pseudonym? And, and that's fine. That's part of the public process. As part of the registration process, when people sign in to Have Your Say Monterey, we do ask. To, for them to share a little bit about themselves. They can have a random, you know, private username, but we do ask that. They let us know, are they a resident of Monterey? Are they, and what, if they live in Monterey, what neighborhood do they live in? That really helps us gather data on, on specific sentiment that might be neighborhood based, especially if we're talking about a specific project. For example. In the near future, we're going to be launching a project page in Have Your Say Monterey about the Casa Verde. Del Monte Avenue and Recreation Trail intersection project. So it'd be helpful to hear that's what the feedback is within specific neighborhoods. So, so that's part of the registration process.
I'm glad Jim brought that up because the one thing that bothered me about it when I went online and I clicked take the survey. Is, is that it does require you to give your email address plus your. Approximate age and where you live and it, I think. I don't know, I just think it should be anonymous rather than. Asking for any personal information. You have to create an account and register. It, it. That just at, at first pass, when I looked at it a few days ago. Made me feel like we're not going to get. The response we want if we're demanding that much, even though it's not, you know, social security number and mother, mother, mother's maiden name and all that. I, I was just concerned that it was asking for anything, frankly.
Yeah.
Why, why do we need somebody's email address to get their opinion about cannabis?
Yeah, that's a really great question, Bob, and I appreciate you asking that. What we've. This is the, the, the challenge and the balance between, do we just do a survey and then have whoever wants to respond to the survey, respond to the survey? There is always a concern about. Folks taking the survey more than once. And, and otherwise we would have just done a, we would have just done the Survey Monkey survey and said, hey, whoever wants to fill it out, fill it out. To have more accurate data, we want people to be invested in the community. It, having the registration process also helps. Serve two purposes. One. Having people from, I don't want to say the outside outsiders, but often you'll get trolls who aren't, don't live in the county or aren't part of our community, whether they're, you know, it's, it's fine if people from, from seaside want to chime in because they're patrons of our library as well. But it, it isn't fine if there's a troll who's hoping to, to do damage on a, on a public community forum. So we have a registration process and it's also helpful to have some, ask for some demographic data upfront. It's the best practice among, among cities and, and what was recommended by. The folks at Bang the Table who work with thousands of local governments throughout the world. And, and the reason for that is it helps us identify and dive a little deeper on, on the feedback and results based on those demographics. So for instance, if we like to know. How, how people feel about hours of operation. Well, how does that differ between youth or seniors, for example?
Yeah.
By collecting that data upfront, we don't have to ask that for that information in the survey and we can still divide up that data later on. And it, it helps us with the decision-making process regardless of what topic we're, we're looking at. We don't share email addresses. We don't share information. We don't ask for your, your, your favorite pet or your mother's maiden name, luckily. But I, I do understand what Bob was saying, you know, it is, it can be and we recognize that's the trade-off. It will turn some people off. Some people will not want to participate because they have to register and tell us what neighborhood they live in and give us their email address, but we do hope that this is a tool that people will use because of that.
Nat, let me ask, let me ask, you're, you're familiar with how this operates. If I go in and I. Submit my email and come up with a password just for this system. And I answer, say, the cannabis survey. If I go back the next day and, you know, sign in. And start to answer the cannabis survey a second time, will it stop me or say, hey, wait a minute, we already have your responses?
Yep. What we've done, the way we set it up, you, you have the option of letting people take the survey twice or take it once. We've set the survey so that people can only respond once.
So it will, it'll catch me.
It'll catch you. It'll say, you've already responded. Thanks for your feedback.
Oh, okay. And, and it won't let me continue to answer or submit my, a new set of answers?
Correct.
Okay, because when they ask about where you live, I mean, one of it just says, I live near Monterey. Well, heck, that doesn't really tell us a whole lot. But, and, and so that's why I was wondering if the email and password too. The only way I could cheat and answer it twice would be to you. Go on and set up two accounts with two different emails.
That's right. That's right. They'd have to be Bob Petty 2 or whatever, whatever name they want to make up as a second person. And, and you don't, you don't see that happen very often, quite frankly, based on the data that we've seen and. Everything we've heard from the, the folks at Bang the Table and other cities who've had a similar experience.
Well, I'm thinking Bob P. and then Nat R. are the two I'm going to use first. Well, I'm thinking Bob P. and then Nat R. are the two I'm going to use first.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Yep. Thanks, Bob. So we've got the forum, and please, these are great questions. Keep asking as much as you like as I walk through the different tools. So this is the forum tool, a little more interactive. People can reply, all of that. The ideas tool is the best way to share this. It's like they say here, a virtual Post-it note. Waits for the community to share ideas on what inspires them. So they come across with blocks and whatnot. Let me share my screen real quick. Here's an example of what one organization did, Art Club. And this is where people, you know, upload photos of their artwork. This one is, let's see. Well, I had other examples, but that's one, one example of that tool. I'll go back. You still see the ideas sheet now? Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And so if somebody puts out an idea, then other people can comment on that idea. So like the one that says add recycling bins, somebody might add another comment to that? Is that the way it works?
Yep. There was, there was an example I was going to share where one library, they did share your favorite book and story. And the people would actually upload the cover of their favorite book, and then now you see a wall of favorite books or whatever it might be, you know, what programming would you like to see for teens? And folks then post information about their programming. So, all right. So that's, it's a pretty interesting, interesting tool. The other one is called Places. This is where feedback and photos go directly onto a map. And, and what's nice about geospatial maps is that it's very visual and you can, you can do different, post different maps per project page. And you can choose multiple tools per project. And, but you just don't want to overwhelm them with, you know, six different tools, otherwise people will not know what to do. You try to fit the right tool for the right question you're trying to ask or the type of engagement. The example I wanted to share with you is in the community of Peterborough in, I believe, Ontario, Canada. They have something called, they did a survey. They also did something called a service map. And the service map is where they said, where would you like to see additional library services in Peterborough? And place a pin on where you think we should be in the community and what kind of service you'd like to see. And this is just an example of what they've done here. And not too many responses, but you know, folks chiming in. Another good spot busy in the summer and would increase visits to the zoo. So, you know, it might be a good spot to put a bookmobile, for instance. So if we're trying to look at other locations for bookmobile services, it's a way to engage. They've got a university here, opportunity for a partnership someone posted on the map. So very interactive. I'm a map guy, so I love this stuff. But it's a neat little, neat little tool that people can use using this software. There's a stories tool where people can share their stories. It's a little bit more engaging in that way. And folk use it for transportation projects and others, you know, you maybe share your favorite story about the library. We're California's first, so it might be, there's ways to engage that way. You've got a guestbook, which is a more streamlined process to upload comments. So you can also, it's a little bit different layout than the Post-it notes. And, and it can be, you can, what's nice about the guestbook is you can moderate it where staff reviews the content to make sure it's on, it's consistent before it gets posted. But it's, you know, they're all moderated for content for profanity and the like. But guestbook is a little bit more, more closely moderated, if you will. There's a Q and A tool, which is nice, this one for projects. We have a Q and A, for example, project page on the recent leaf blower ban on residential lots. So we've had a few people already ask some questions about the leaf blower ban, and we've responded to the questions. And we can decide whether we respond to those questions privately or we respond to those questions publicly. There's a quick poll. This one's just a single question, not multiple questions. And this one, you can allow one vote per user, which is nice still. And you can, this tool also allows you to show those votes instantly. And then, of course, we're all familiar with online surveys and how that works. You could use for 14 different question types. You can use a Riker scale. You can do radio buttons where people have to choose only one option, checkboxes, multiple options. You, what we're doing now with the Monterey Sports Center, we've been working on a survey that will go out sometime in mid-February that will ask both current members of the sports center and prospective members of the sports center, how do they feel about returning back to the sports center and what they like to see and what services they use? And you can, you can do rules within those, the surveys where if they answer this question, if they say yes to this, then they're asked more follow-up questions. So there's that aspect of the survey tool as well. So that's, that's an overview of the different tools that are available. And of course, like I shared with you earlier, you have what they call widgets, which each project you can turn on or off and include the lifecycle that show you where we are on the project, who's listening, key dates, FAQ, you can upload photos, videos, documents, important links, related projects. And, and since we've launched in just about three weeks, it's been, been pretty successful. We've had over 150 people take the Cannabis survey so far, considering that it's a pretty lengthy survey. Once you get into it with about 14 questions or so, we think it's pretty good. And we've had over 500 people visit our webpage over the past couple of weeks. So not too bad considering we just launched. And it's an opportunity for all of you to, to use this, of course, as a library to engage with the public however you like. And we're happy to provide that support. And I understand there's going to be a subcommittee potentially that will be looking into this with our newest trustee, trustee Bogus and others. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the platform. We're excited about it in the City Manager's Office and glad to have this as another tool for us to use in Monterey.
Thank you. Jim?
Nat, just a comment and a question. I'm very interested in this. It's quite a powerful tool. So congratulations on getting this. And this, and the question is, you said we could use it any way we wanted. Does that include fundraising? Can people give money through this tool?
We wish there, one thing I'll share with you, you can't, there's no interface where there's a direct, you know, direct payment process. But we can use it to, one of the great things about this tool is we use it as an opportunity to inform people, not just get feedback, but inform. So this is where using the links, absolutely, we should have as part of a survey, a call to action that goes to, here's how you can contribute to the Friends and Foundation. It's absolutely appropriate to do that. When we're doing the sports center survey, it's not just about getting feedback, but also to let people know what is, what is the sports center about. I definitely recommend doing that as part of, as part of your efforts to always include a link on how people can give back.
Very interesting.
And so in order to host some of these things, you need special, you need some sort of, I mean, can anybody just get on and set up one of these forums? Or is this something you need special user permission for?
Yep, special user permission to set up. The way that we're working with this is myself and Lori Falga, who is our PIO, and Eric Palmer in our office. The three of us are site managers for this tool. And any city department that would like to utilize it for informational project or engagement effort can contact one of us, and we'll be happy to walk you through the process, coach you through the setup. And then once we've, we've done that and helped you, helped you through it, we can then assign staff to serve as project managers to actually manage the content and respond to the Q and A, add new content, et cetera.
Something very great.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Nat?
It's not the case that people responding to any of these can interact with each other.
It depends on how you set it up. So the first three options where it was the, we called it.
Forum, the forum?
Yeah, the forum, the Post-it note tool. Those are what they call the open environment tools, where participants can actually engage with each other.
I would just be leery of opening up, I mean, it sounds like opening up a Twitter back and forth or something. And people are going to start, I notice this sometimes when people go on, when Hans is doing his Morning with the Manager show, and somebody will say something and somebody else will respond to that person, it's almost like they're not paying attention to Hans. They're just going back and forth as if they were, you know, texting one to the other, to the other, to the other. And, you know, I guess I would rather just see this as a way for the city to collect information that the citizens and respondents want to provide rather than interacting with each other.
Yep. And that's why we have choices here on what, what level of engagement do you want or don't want members of the public to interact with each other. Luckily, there's moderation so that it helps keep people on topic. But you're absolutely right. It can get messy if you have differing ideas. But that's also part of the process though, too, in terms of engagement.
It's kind of like next door in some sense. But I could say that this is very good for focus groups, for example. You know, if you want to pull together a group like we did with our hardwood process, and you want to pull together a group of teens or a group of senior citizens or something to have to, and have a discussion about something, that would be a very good tool for that.
I can see where it would be great for programming, to set up, getting, surveying different sectors of the population of eventually someday, when we go back to the new normal, what programming like seniors might need or teens or parents or whatever. It seems like a really good tool to not only solicit input from the public that we're supposed to be serving, but also at the same time, it's like a teachable moment where you can say, oh, and by the way, we've got this, 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 and this. So you can really keep the community engaged by doing that.
I think so. All right. Well, I think we have a new toy to play with here. Thanks. Thanks very much for sharing.
Thank you, Nat.
We will take advantage of that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that we pulled item three from consent, so that goes into new business. So now we should do a for public comments, I think. Yeah? This is the place where we do public comments?
Well, for members of the public, we do encourage you to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10-second delay and on Comcast Channel 25, that's a 90-second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone and ensure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting on Zoom, use the link or phone number on the Library Board of Trustees Agenda at icertchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1605955781. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand, or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand.
Hey, thank you. So we move on. And now agenda item number three.
Sure. So I asked to have it pulled because the recommendation is incorrect. So if you look at the recommendation, after the word budget and then the word for, that's the second line, if you're looking at the printed report.
In pocket page?
Sure, pocket page 11.
Thank you. That's where I was.
Great. It says for youth programs and to be used towards an RFID project. That was actually last month, what the material was for. This time it is for library materials, fund development staff hours, and the winter reading program. And in the discussion, which takes place on packet page 12, and in the chart at the bottom of packet page 12, indeed, it lists just those things. Library materials, fund development staff, and winter reading program. So what this is asking you to do is to request that the council appropriate these funds. These funds were donated for those purposes. So we received funds through our fall appeal that people earmarked specifically for the collections. And we received a wishlist contribution from the Friends and Foundation for time for up to 10 hours of Mary Jane's time because currently it's funded at 14 hours a week. And then we received $1,500 from the Kiwanis Club to run our winter reading program. There's one other error in the report on packet page 12 in the paragraph under the word Fund Development Staff, $11,300 up at the top of the page. It says January through June, but it's actually through July. So it's the third line of that paragraph.
Okay, any question? Discussion? Bob?
I was just going to move that we request the city council appropriate the money in this item per the request of the donors.
Second?
And I'll be happy to second that. Beat me to it.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Petty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Chair Morrow.
Yes. So we move on to item four in new business, which is to discuss and approve the library director's work plan. So Inga, take it away.
Sure, sure. So this is part of the annual process that you have with the library director that first you provide the library director with an annual review. And as part of that annual review, the director submits suggested goals and objectives. But then after the review, those goals and objectives are tweaked to reflect the feedback that the director has received and to incorporate the priorities, of course, of the board and of the library in general. So I received the, we had that meeting together in August. And then we thought, well, we need to update the library's strategic priorities before I submit my work plan because we want to make sure my work plan executes items on a strategic, on a list of strategic initiatives. So at our December 3 meeting, the library board adopted new strategic priorities. And then now you have before you a draft of a work plan from me that then follows along and incorporates, and certainly touches upon, but incorporates most of those strategic priorities in the plan. It also starts off with a vision statement. One of the concerns is we want to make sure that folks understand what the director's vision is. So I thought, well, if we have it in writing, then we can point to it and say, yep, the director was clear about what the vision was. And then we can refer back to this if we're wondering what it is the director thinks needs to be accomplished. Well, now we've got a work plan that executes the strategic initiatives. So that's what you have before you.
So that's what you have before you. Um, and then uh I welcome your comments. I I did receive a lot of uh input and guidance along the way from uh Chair Moreau and Vice Chair Thompson. And then I did check, we checked in with um Assistant City Manager Nat Rajanasa Thira to make sure that that it looked like we were on the right track in terms of how library, the library directors work fits with the rest of the city's um roles and so forth. So that's what you have before you and um I would welcome your comments, questions, and suggestions for improvement. And then ideally, if not at this meeting, then at another meeting, they would be approved.
Well, this item says to uh uh approve, so the that would be appropriate for tonight unless we decide for some reason we cannot. But it does say discuss and approve, so the implication is that we're gonna do a thumbs up or thumbs down tonight of what you presented.
Yes, unless the discussion indicates that there are significant revisions needed, in which case then uh might not be approved tonight.
Then we would carry it over to the next meeting if there is work to be done to uh to amend it. Opening the floor for any uh questions or comments?
I like the format that I'm seeing here. I'm used to working with student learning outcomes and college accreditation documents. And this follows that format, so it's something I'm very familiar with. It's very concrete, uh it gives you something that you can measure. Uh, and so it builds an accountability. So I was very pleased when I read through it and especially when I took a look at it with the strategic planning document that we put together. I know somebody put a lot of work into this, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I should mention that uh we did attach, I did attach the fund development plan for 2021. Um, so I didn't spell out that um the key results in detail for that because I refer you to that plan. And then also so that you could follow along, as trustee Felgood said, I attached the um strategic priorities document that was adopted at our last meeting.
Yes, Jim?
I actually previously provided a few comments to Inga, so I'm 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 happy with the document. But I did want just to make a comment, one of the things that Inga added to her vision statement, and it's also covered under the library management under organizational excellence, is a focus on uh creating an atmosphere where we learn from mistakes. And I just wanted to compliment Inga on on taking that approach. I think particularly during the pandemic, we need to try new things and be innovative. And I know in most bureaucracies, there's a tendency to avoid doing that because you can be criticized. So I just wanted to uh thank Inga and and encourage that thinking throughout the staff and the board. Because I think if we ever needed that type of approach, it's it's during this pandemic. So thank you very much, Inga, for that uh that nice uh aspect to the vision statement.
Thank you. Well, I know that um our our former youth services manager was really trying to weave the whole growth mindset into the youth um program planning so that the kids would really see, rather than getting the right answer, to try to appreciate the process and try and then make adjustments and try again. And um there's so many of the principles that we try to introduce in our youth programming that I find are valuable, you know, guides for how uh we as adults also live our lives. So that's, thank you, that's uh the growth mindset part that I tried to weave into there.
Yeah, I also wanted to add that um uh I I think it's wonderful that uh we've got the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging um item in there and that um it's all going to be done in collaboration with the city. So we're, it it represents a partnership between the library director, the board, the city management, where we we all are on the same page and we're all working together. And I think that that's where we were trying to go. And so um they won't, we'll all be moving forward together, which is, I think, great. Okay?
Bob has a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
Yeah, uh, two things. Uh, one, um, or actually three. One, I like the the document overall and it's very inclusive and sets forward a a lot of um uh, well, the the goals and things that we want to, we want to accomplish focusing on the director. But uh it's it's well um uh compared to the uh strategic strategic planning document that the board as a whole did, uh like Jennifer pointed out. Um, the one thing I noticed is that in a number of the uh sections here, there are long lists of things that uh Inga would work on without necessarily prioritizing them or indicating that some may be, and inevitably, some may be more important or more essential to do sooner rather than later than some of the other things. And maybe the uh the board's opinion about some of those will just come out as we uh talk to Inga. And I assume you're gonna continue doing the monthly sort of report that we started a couple of years ago, where I think basically it's uh, well, this month, this is what I did. And uh e- especially if you're continuing that so that we don't just get a once a year snapshot of what you've done. That it's uh uh, you know, every month like we have been the last couple of years, then maybe uh some of these things that are are we consider more important than others that are even in the same paragraph can be discussed. Um, and if you're wondering, one example, just one, is that cross-training of staff is just one of a handful of things in the same sentence as a bunch of other things. And uh if nothing else, recent events, and we could talk about them, but I don't know, wanna, we wanna take up the time at this meeting, uh have um brought to the forefront how crucial that is. And so I would look at that as one of the most important things in terms of the uh organizational excellence section. Uh, yet, when you just look at the document, it's just one of many things on a list. The other thing I want to point out is that um board policy 311, which uh in which the annual director review is uh discussed and mentioned, um, is supposed to take place in during August and September. But uh Inga, in your next to the last paragraph of the like intro, you say that the time period covered by the plan should be the calendar year of 2021, which would go, I assume, through December. And so procedurally, what, I don't think we should wait till the last minute and then go, gee whiz, I wonder what we're gonna do. 311, our board policy says we should be reviewing you. And back now, you're saying, no, basically, don't do it until after the calendar year. So I'm just, I want to avoid a conflict there and and talk about, do we just do like a partial review? Do we uh just, you know, lower expectations? Because in August, there's still gonna be four more months before the end of December. Uh, what did you have in mind when you uh put that in there, knowing the the board policy says um August and September?
So first, so thank you, that's a great question. Looking at the policy, I don't see that it specifies the August and September in the policy itself. But the thinking was, if you haven't approved the goals and objectives and the evaluation is for a 12-month period and you're just seeing the goals and objectives now, if the 12-month period were to end in um August of next year, then you haven't had a 12-month um opportunity to evaluate the performance of and execution of these uh objectives that you've agreed I should be following. So I think that's the the challenge is, we had delayed it. And then, so just trying to be clear about what the 12-month period should be. So I I have it on my screen, the library board policy 311. And I see where it says uh evaluation shall be based on director's goals and objectives for the previous 12 months. But I I don't see, and I could be just n- not seeing it where it says the particular month.
Well, it it would, if you don't see it in 311, then uh I know, because we used to be doing it in June, July. And then last year, we realized that, oh, oh, my gosh, it's right here in black and white, August and September. And I thought it was 311 because uh that's the reference that starts that discussion section of your document today. It could be the um bylaws of the board, which I do not have in front of me.
Okay.
But I do know that we discovered that doing it in June, July was um wrong procedure, and that's why we changed it per what was already written down for August, September. Um, now, the what we did last August, September, as you you say here, the initial submission, uh since then, a number of factors have disrupted the usual schedule for adopting the work plan. And basically, you're saying we're four months late doing what we're, you're proposing we do tonight.
Right, and it's not that I took it upon myself to just ignore the next step.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that either. I'm just saying that for whatever reasons, what we're talking about doing tonight should have been done last September.
Uh, Jim? Can I make a suggestion? Since we're not real clear what there may be in writing that we probably should be paying some attention to, my suggestion would we, we ask Inga to bring this back next month um at our next month's meeting with some clarity about what written documents there are. And then we can decide whether we need to follow those or exactly what we're doing. Because I'm not sure we have the information in front of us right now to be clear about what we, where we should go from here on this. I think Bob raised two good questions, that's one of them. The other one that I also wanted to pick up on was this question of whether Inga should provide a monthly report on on the status of where she's at on her work plan. I know we decided a a couple of years ago, I think, to do that. Um, but my sense of it is that doing it monthly may be a little too frequently, especially given the the lean staffing and that Inga's doing a lot of different things. You know, I I I would be more inclined, at least for for this next year, um to think about doing it either every two months or even quarterly. Uh, to me, monthly is a little too often, but I know Bob may feel differently, but I just wanted to throw that out as a, as a different reporting cycle.
Yeah, I I agree. I think that uh that quarterly would be fun, particularly because we have a a planning committee that um, you know, that's meeting regularly. We have other ad hoc committees that are that are moving forward. I think, I think um having to write that, write that um detailed what I, what I did every day kind of plan for every single meeting is is a bit much. So I would, I would think quarterly would work.
Well, I'm, since I mentioned it, I'll just say I I'm not necessarily wed to every month. Um, it could be less frequently, but I think for uh the purpose of uh our keeping more aware of um Ingo's, Inga's accomplishments and being able to provide her with the feedback and direction that the board is entrusted with providing. Um, you know, well, especially given this coming year, maybe in past years, a monthly one was uh, you know, different. But uh in this year, maybe uh less frequently than every single month would be fine with me. But I think it should be often enough so that we it, we feel like we're in the know and that we can provide the kind of feedback and direction that we're supposed to when we do meet with the the director.
Well, I think by the items that appear on the agenda, we are kind of kept informed about the the direction that the library is going in. Um, and the committee reports also also tell us those things, so um.
Let me say this, and why don't we make it quarterly instead of monthly? Because monthly was sort of uh an assignment that the board gave to Inga a couple of years ago and went on for the last two years. Why don't we say that uh this calendar year will make it quarterly? But that doesn't mean that the board can't reserve the right to make a request any old time it wants for an update on something or other. Um, for example, um if we continue to see the cross-training and we could talk about why it's so important, especially given a reduced staff size, uh, we might say, Inga, think about that and give us kind of an outline of how you anticipate achieving uh increased cross-training compared to what we've had before. And just on that one thing, uh, give us some feedback in February. And it doesn't have to be a lengthy, cover every single thing on her work plan, but just, you know, one thing at a time that pops into our uh attention. But don't expect anything of an overall nature uh except maybe quarterly.
Right, right. Okay, so I I I think we can give that direction, just to say that you'll give quarterly reports on it. And that we'll bring it back next week with a, I mean, next month with a clarification um on the, on the, on the dates and the uh but in the meantime, uh I think you can move ahead and start working on the things that are in your work plan.
So that would be the question, can we separate the the objectives? You know, say yes, uh, the objectives, the goals and objectives are approved. Um, but um as for the evaluation period for um looking again at those, you know, will be X period at the next meeting.
I think that makes sense.
As a note, I did see that the minutes of September 2016 updated board policy 311. It did previously refer to the valuation taking place in August and September. But at that meeting, the board voted to remove the specific months and instead refer to it as the previous 12-month evaluation period.
That's why I'm I'm seeing it without a reference when I look at the board policy 311 on our website.
And that's probably, and that's probably why Bob saw it there before, because it was there before and now it's been removed, so. Okay, so so perhaps we don't need to bring it back, perhaps the work plan starts immediately. And uh and and the uh evaluation period is is for the work plan.
Well, the problem with that, of course, is then what do we do with our meetings at the end of the year? We decreased the monthly meeting count by one and we have all that space in between. In other words, we don't have monthly meetings uh after October. We have one meeting for the whole rest of the year, right?
Uh, yes, we have.
And I think that's one reason why maybe not doing it at the end of a calendar year because of the holidays and how we change our meeting schedule. Um, maybe that's why the evaluation is, takes place at a different time of the year, I guess.
Well, we we can certainly hold a closed session meeting during, not during the time of one of our monthly meetings. We can hold, as we did this year, we can put a closed session meeting in and in November, December, January, wherever we want to put it. So I think uh, I I think that, I think we should vote on this approval of this plan. I think first we need to uh ask for public comment. Uh, Francesca, yes, we're?
Yeah.
Yes?
Me.
For members who would like to comment, we do encourage you to join this meeting via Zoom Gov. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. To make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand or to join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Intermeeting ID 160595. Inter-meeting ID one six zero five nine five five seven eight one. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. If you are connected by phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. When called upon, dial star six to unmute yourself. And once again, that phone number is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Meeting ID number one six zero five nine five five seven eight one. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Tim Rowe, there are no callers.
Hey, thank you. So um, uh, we vote on the approval of this plan.
You need a motion? If so, I move approval.
I, I'll second, um, and I'd request, uh, can we add to the motion that we, uh, direct the uh, library director to come back quarterly with uh, progress reports on the work plan?
I'm happy with that amendment.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay, trustee Felger.
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Petty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Chair Morrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item five, which is the receiving the quarterly trust fund report.
Great. So this is the quarterly report that tells you how much came into the trust fund overall. And then of the smaller subset, which is the trust fund budget, how much was spent during this quarter? So um, the report starts out with showing you the revenue that was uh, collected. There's a chart, the revenue that was collected during quarter two, the revenue that's been collected year to date, and then expenditure for second quarter and expenditure year to date. And then um, we also give you the trust fund balance. There's a special reserve for the bookmobile to replace a bookmobile called the Aller Trust. So shows you on the second chart down that that amount went up a little bit from quarter two to year end. And then um, the other trust fund monies that aren't the bookmobile reserve. And then the total for the quarter and the total year-to-date uh, value of the trust fund.
And that's page 28 of the packet.
Thank you. Yes, packet page 28. And then the next two charts show you revenue that was uh, how much we thought we would take in uh, in various kinds of revenue and then what we actually took in for the quarter and year end. And one thing you'll see is basically other than interest and donations, we haven't collected the revenue that we normally collect through um, the copier uh, and printing fees and sale of library store merchandise. So no monies were collected there. And then under expenditures, it shows you how, um, so each year you approve a budget for uh, trust fund and then that shows you how much we've spent of that money that was allocated. And then each time you appropriate, like you just appropriated fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. So that's gonna adjust our budget. And then, and the next quarterly report, you'll see how much we've spent. So that's, that's the first part of, of this report. Then the second half of the report basically tells you, okay, so there's a trust fund budget. It was allocated for certain things. What did you actually do when you spent the money? And that is um, on packet pages thirty through thirty-four. However, the most involved part of that, uh, just accounting of how the money was spent is um, the fund development report. And so the fund development report goes into quite a bit of detail and it's quite interesting. And um, and uh, it also talks about what we've done in terms of fund development. So it's a little confusing. I know Jim had told me it seemed a little odd because we have such detail there and then it goes on to say, oh, we spent about this much money on books. And then we spent about this much money on programs. And it's sort of, oh wow, well, that chart is just a few pages earlier on in the report. So I'm, I'm happy to do this report differently in the future. But um, I would thought that I would have Mary Jane walk you through the portion that is the fund development report because um, we have some really good numbers and, and they, I wanted her to kind of highlight them. So Mary Jane, if you wouldn't mind just kind of walking people through the fund development report, since it's such good news, I would appreciate.
Yeah, um, we're just thrilled with the performance um, in the second quarter. And, and I think that it's a combination of factors. We, I think, uh, all boats row, uh, rode the rising tide of such a successful Monterey County gives campaign. And I also think that devastating as the pandemic has been economically to many people, to those of us who are reasonably comfortable and, and not threatened economically. Um, there's, I think there's just been a lot of generosity coming to the fore. So I would like Inga and I to take all of the credit, but I actually think that there are a lot of environmental factors that contributed to this. We've also been, you know, as you've heard me say before, we've been asking more people. And we've been, been trying, even though we don't have much of a communications budget or function right now, to um, be as sort of responsive and specific with um, uh, our stewardship as possible. We, uh, but I, I think that the concern about the library has just grabbed the attention of many because we had brand new, you know, kind of a couple of brand new two thousand dollar pennies from heaven kind of gifts. Um, a woman who um, uh, made a gift from her IRA uh, of two thousand dollars, um, who told me on the phone that she usually supports the Native Plant Society, but this year she's compelled to, actually it was to support our book budget for books in print. She's almost ninety, and so she'd rather have those books in print. And a couple of um, local family foundations that gave very generously, really out of the blue, some just wonderful stories, like there's a donor who lives in Melrose, of all places, but grew up on the peninsula, who gave uh, sixty dollars a couple in two thousand sixteen. Last year gave us two hundred and fifty and this year, Inga, did he give us, I think he gave us eighteen hundred? Yeah. So we're just um, lavishing notes and, and appreciation on those people. So I think we've got some traction. The uh, let's see, I think we did not, I know there's been concern in the past that we, uh, one of our fund development committee members uh, from the Friends and Foundation had been concerned that we were asking for too much, too many times and asking the same people too many times. But I think that with care and messaging, we seem to have not offended anyone or heard, heard a discouraging word. Um, I think the key is to just make sure that uh, people know that you know, that they already might have given, that you appreciated and so that they don't take whatever appeal you're writing as another kind of dunning experience. And um, then last, I'll just say that, that the little chart on the top of page thirty-three that got watched uh, right before library materials, um, is a little um, summary campaign tracker that um, is not just quarter two, but um, since our campaign started running on September first, that's I, I, I thought I would just continue to track campaign results in this format so that you'll see it over time, um, through the life of the campaign. And it'll become familiar. And if your board packet were in color, you would really appreciate the slightly different shadings of the headings um, among the, the, the three different areas where we're, we're reporting. It also might just be worth mentioning that we um, are, just as a reminder that in the past, gifts can, well, gifts will continue to come in directly to the trust fund because there are some donors that prefer it or that just uh, have checks made out to the Monterey Public Library. So I don't think it will ever completely dry up as a stream for contributed revenue. But because our public face of the campaign and our public simplified approach to fundraising is to lead with the Friends and Foundation, you know, over time, you, I hope, we see that um, receipts for the Friends and Foundation going way up. And we could see a diminution, diminution? Yeah, um, of um, receipts in the trust fund. So if anyone has any questions, I'm glad to take a crack at them, but otherwise we're just cooking along and uh, thanks to all of you for your, your in generosity too.
Bob, question?
Uh, yeah, I think uh, uh, Mary Jane, you said it right. You're cooking along and uh, uh, hopefully you don't over boil and get tired and lose the, everything because uh, it, it's just going great. And cooking along is probably a good way to phrase it. I have a question and then I want to comment on one thing that's in the uh, pardon me, in the fund development plan that was uh, uh, attached just before all the data you were talking about. Does the Friends and, and maybe I should know, I should know it if it exists, let's put it that way. Does the Friends and Foundation have a logo?
Yes, they do. This, this meeting's over. I'm going to email you their website, um, which was redone in July and at something that uh, I worked significantly on all new fund development pages. Um, but uh, there's a kind of homegrown logo that Doug designed that everyone is pretty happy with. So I'm going to send you that link so you can get your fill of gazing at that logo.
Is it out there already in public or is it, or right? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I think we haven't announced it in print because I think we stopped, well, it was in the um, we stopped doing newsletters.
But it's on the letterhead that goes out.
Well, I, I think it's, yeah, you know, we should have that prominently displayed in the beginning, like uh, initial, um, let the rest of the world know. Because you know, if, if you're following charitable donations at all, the SPCA, for example, they've had the same logo. They changed the color of it. For some reason I can't understand, but they, they've had the same logo. So when you see that logo, you know it's the SPCA, you don't have to read the words. And it would sure be nice if the library, the Friends and Foundation got that too.
It's up there.
What, what, what website's that, Marcia?
Invest in MPL.
The Friends, the Friends and Foundation website. Yeah, sorry. Sorry to have talked over.
That's the one. What, what is it? It's a real long name. Donate to the library dot org or something like that?
WWW dot invest in MPL.
Invest in MPL, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, good. I will look forward to seeing that and uh, pretty soon we're gonna have what? T-shirts and um, vests and everything with the logo, like the SPCA one here?
Well, if you, if you buy the right kind of ticket for wine and chocolate, you'll get engraved wine glasses.
Oh, boy. Uh, I imagine Bevmo will be glad about that because I'd want to look at the logo every time I, anyhow. Um, in the first paragraph of the fund development plan, uh, again, I don't claim to have uh, universal vocabulary, but there's a word that I don't understand. It says libraries already straightened netted budget.
Oh.
On packet page twenty-one.
Right, straightened, like straightened circumstances?
In dire, in dire straits, right?
Straightened?
Yeah.
Just pronounced, straightened.
Oh, I, I thought maybe it was a typo and it should say seriously now, strain.
Well, that's.
He could say that, but.
Straightened. Let me look for a.
When you straighten something, I.
Oh, it's an adjective.
Yeah. I know, it just seemed like there were too many syllables there and I didn't recognize the word.
It's in dictionary.
The one thing I'll just comment on, that sentence there where that word is, says that the city was forced to reduce the library's budget by more than sixty percent. And just as a personal comment, I would point out that the city wasn't forced to do that at all. The city chose to cut the library by sixty percent. They could have cut the library a whole lot less and cut elsewhere and achieved the same dollar savings. But that was a choice that the city management made. And it wasn't something that, they were forced to reduce the city's budget and expenditures, no question. But choosing to cut the library by sixty and others by different amounts, that was a choice. That was nothing that was forced on anybody.
Well, I, I should have a comment. You might be glad to know that you're not the first person that pointed that out to Inga and me. Um, when the Friends and Foundation's Fund Development Committee reviewed similar language for our campaign case statement, we um, made the, I don't remember exactly how it's revised and it's still diplomatic, but it um, was not quite as, I don't know, I got uh, it, it was maybe a little bit more straightforward or less apologetic. Anyway, I, uh, you're not the only person who pointed that out, so um, thank you for noting it.
Good to know. Thank you. And I'll, I'll go later tonight to the website and put the logo in the forefront of my brain.
I'm sending it to you, fear not.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Jim.
Jim.
I have two things. One, I, I wanted to see if Bob wanted to join me at a tattoo parlor this evening. Wait, we have a nice little canvas in here that we invite her well on.
I see, wow.
Don't do it.
But in, in all seriousness, I, I did want to compliment Mary Jane and Inga and also the Friends and Foundation and their Fund Development Committee for the great progress that's been made. The, the numbers are, are much, much better than they've been in the past and a major accomplishment during these difficult times. So thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah, big here, here.
Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
We shall. We're, and let me just uh, share that we're, uh, we had our first inquiry in the end of October from an individual who wanted to make a gift of appreciated securities. And so kind of after, um, you know, not, not uh, after wondering how to approach it. Um, and, and we, that donor eventually decided to make his gift, which isn't what he'd initially intended, but to make it through um, MC Gives. So therefore the stock could go to the community foundation, so therefore there was no fee charged. But long story short, the treasurer has um, done all the uh, legwork and um, this week, um, AD Ameritrade got our papers so that we'll have a fee-free um, balance, no balance needed or totally insignificant balance, a brokerage account. And you know, I kind of feel like it's sort of like build it and they will come because we got another inquiry a couple of weeks ago from someone who, um, after corresponding with him, he says he's gonna wait till we have our own brokerage account. So it's really fun.
So does that mean, Mary Jane, that, that in the future, donations to the Friends and Foundation can be at least partially invested in this uh, account? Is that what you're saying?
I know, actually what we're trying to do is cater to donors who may have Apple stock and Verizon stock and all those other wonderful things that are vastly appreciated and that are, that. And that are, that if they don't need the proceeds from those.
Oh, yeah. So right now, we could, the Friends and Foundation could not accept shares of stock?
Only through the community foundation, which charges us 2%.
Yeah, I know. But now with this Ameritrade thing,
Yeah.
Somebody could donate shares
Yes.
to Friends and Foundation without the fees that community foundation charges.
Yes.
And the library can start to write the portfolio.
That's right.
Very good.
But they'll be liquidated as soon as they are received and turned into cash in the foundation's bank account, right?
I think so. I imagine so. Yeah.
I mean, the intent isn't to hang on to them and manage investments. It's to convert them right away. Yeah, good.
Okay, any other comments on this item? So now when we move to old business, because the packet is in a different order than the agenda, we're going to move, we're going to move the agenda items. It's too complicated to switch the packet around. So the first one is item number seven, which is now item number six. Is that correct?
So if you're following along in the sequence, packet sequence, the next report up is the one about RFID.
Right.
Which is incorrectly listed as number seven on the agenda, but it's actually number six.
It'd be six, right. Okay, so I look forward to that.
Great. So this is the update on RFID. And trustee Joshi and I met last week to discuss it. And I'm in the process of completing the paperwork for the contract for RFID. The great thing is, is we're able to use a process called piggybacking. So rather than having gone out for bid, we actually have a library system that had already done that process and our due diligence and so forth. And so we're able to piggyback on that contract. They vetted five vendors and selected one. And so we're going with that one and getting the pricing that a much, much bigger system was able to get by doing the piggybacking. So we're just in the process of filling out that paperwork. Luckily, we got on their queue, the company's queue, and it looks like we'll probably be receiving our tags if everything goes well. And of course, it doesn't seem like lately everything's been going well. Although the trust fund numbers, I mean, the fund development numbers have been going well. But we think in February we'll be receiving the tags and get started on tagging our collection. And then trustee Joshi is going to lead a team of volunteers. So that's really exciting. Plus, we also have the funds that we set aside that would be used for hourly folks to help tag as well as part of the project. And then what I didn't include in my report is the status of Pacific Grove. And Pacific Grove is still waiting to find out what their balance is with the dust settling on their renovation project because they're hoping to use some of those funds towards tagging their collection. So that is to be continued. The director told me today, I'll get back to you. So were there questions?
Do you have a an approximate sense of how long the whole thing will take and when it will be up and running? I know it's very, very difficult to do that, but if, say, the tags come in mid-February and.
So the question will be how quickly our teams will be able to tag the collection. And from the different vendors, I've sort of heard a wide-ranging estimate for the amount of time it will take. But in general, they seem to think it takes a couple of months to tag the collection.
So maybe by the summer? Any other questions? And so we've completely separated the materials handling, and that's another phase. I'm assuming that this is just the RFID part.
Well, the exciting development with the vendor that we're selecting is we're going to get what's called a smart bin. And with a smart bin, and those of you are familiar with coming into the library and returning your books through the slot in the wall inside the building. On the other side of that slot is a dumb bin. Right now, it's just a bin that, you know, has a spring in it and goes down when books get put in it and raises back up when we take the books out. Anyway, the smart bin will automatically check in anything that's put in it. So that is sort of like a mini, that's a toe in the water of automated materials handling, which is it's going to be less time-intensive for staff because all the things that are winding up in that bin will have been checked in.
Oh, great. So they just need to be re-shellled now?
Well, they're going to be taken out. And then the ones that have holds on them will trip a slip. A slip will print out for the holds and then we'll put some in crates to go back to Pacific Grove and that kind of thing. So there'll be a little sorting involved, but it's not the same as a person sitting there grabbing each one by hand and then having to manually scan it.
Yes. Progress is being made.
Yes.
Sounds like a giant step into the 21st century.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Marcia, I just wanted to say it all sounds good. And I wanted to in particular thank Harish for coordinating the volunteer tagging group.
Yes, that's great. That's great. And maybe, and maybe some of us will be volunteers.
Hey, I've done it. I can bring experience.
As far as the public's experience, at least for the foreseeable future, when we're still checking out materials with our sidewalk system, they won't notice any difference at all because they'll still go online, create a hold, get an email, walk up to the front door and everything. It's just all behind the scenes will be much more efficient.
Yes.
Ultimately, there'll be more efficiency on the self-checkout. But that's maybe a year in the future, possibly.
So one of the things that we'll have is a app. And customers can use their smartphone to check out the materials to themselves. And so they find the item on the shelf, they check it out, they walk out the door. And they don't have to use those self-check machines. Or when they stop at the service desk, they can just be stopping to say hello.
Okay. Good news. So now we move on to item seven. Which, oh, now, the next thing in the packet is item eight here, which we've changed to item seven, which is the Ad hoc Benchmarking Library Services and Cost Committee Report.
Yes.
The next thing in the package.
So.
So Jim?
You're doing the benchmarking one now, right?
Yes.
Did you want me to give an overview?
Or Inga? I'm not sure who's.
Inga, watch. She's working on the survey.
Okay.
Okay, so we, as you know, we had identified a peer group and we wanted to get more detailed information from them. We're using the State Library statistics from 2018, 2019 fiscal year because that's the most recent set that's available for all these different libraries on the state's website. But also the 2019, 2020 years and the typical year, you know, it was for so many libraries that strange things happened. So, and communities as well. So anyway, so we're using that year, but we had some questions about some of the numbers that we were looking at. So we did a survey with our peer library group. And all but one library was able to complete the survey. So we attached the survey to the packet. So you can just see what questions we were asking to get further clarification. One of the questions we were looking at is looking at the library's general fund budget, comparing it to the city's general fund budget, and seeing what percentage of the general fund in a particular city was devoted to the library. So that was a question that I know our city manager was interested in us finding out more information about. And then we wanted to have a breakdown of their staffing costs and how much, how much, how much staff and then how much budget went into different parts of services. So for instance, youth services, how many youth services positions did they have? And then how much did they expand on those? And were those positions full-time, regular, part-time, or hourly? And then we also asked libraries to include an organization chart. And so we thought that information would be useful since they're our peer group. We want to see how our peers have divided up staffing duties. And then also we asked them if they had implemented RFID or any other sort of time-saving technology. And then we asked also if they had a reopening plan to please attach their plan. And so it was really helpful to see. All of the respondents gave us an org chart. And there is quite a range in how they staff things. And then two of the libraries gave us their reopening plan. So that was helpful, too.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great.
And so we're still analyzing the responses and comparing the data. And we attached on here the list of our peer libraries, too. So you would be reminded of who they are. And that's where we are at this point. And if one of the other members of the committee wants to chime in, please do so.
Jim, you want to add anything to them?
The only thing I might mention is that the previous agenda report describes kind of the criteria that we use to determine which would be our benchmark cities. But in looking at some of the overall data, like, for example, the citywide general fund budgets for all of them, most of them have much smaller citywide budgets than the city of Monterey. So they're not comparable in some senses for other services. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that we have so much tourism and we have larger staff for police and fire and some other things related to all kind of being a regional and a tourism hub. But also because we contract out for a lot of services to other cities and other agencies. For example, we provide fire contract service to Carmel and Pacific Grove and San City. So we, and the airport. And so we probably have almost twice as many firefighters as we would have if we just provided service to the city of Monterey. So we have a few anomalies like that, that if you look at citywide, those would not be the benchmark cities, I would suggest, you know, for a citywide comparison. But we picked them just to be looking at comparing for library services. And so I think they probably will make sense for a library benchmark, but they would not probably be good benchmarks for police or fire or some other services in the city. So one of the things that I've learned from this is that to really do this right citywide, you'd probably have 13 different groups of benchmark cities, one for each department. So it's much, it's much more complicated than it seems when you start an effort like this. And we're not even through it. I'm sure it will become even more complicated as we go. But I just wanted to give that flavor that some people might think these are strange benchmark cities for a city like Monterey. And I would agree with that. But on the other hand, we think that they may well be good benchmark cities for our library service. So we're tailoring it very much towards the library. And for example, we eliminated any cities that have branch libraries because we thought cities that have branch libraries, if you had all the hours open for the main library plus the branch libraries, they'll have a lot more hours of service. So as soon as you get into branches, you get kind of a whole different animal in terms of the way it's structured. So we thought in terms of the type of analysis we're doing, it made sense to eliminate cities with branches, but you might well have them if you were comparing to police or fire. So again, just that these, these cities may seem a little unusual to some, but for purposes of the library comparison, we think they make sense, at least at this point. So I just want to give a little additional background on that. And we'll get into that more later when we provide a more thorough report with actually the data that we come up with.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Yeah, Bob?
I think this is very interesting and I'm eager to see the results. Do you have any idea when the report that Jim just referred to will be in our board packet?
I don't think we're ready quite to commit yet because we've not.
Have you collected everything from, you've collected everything though, right?
No.
Bob, we found some discrepancies in some of the numbers. We have the state survey data and we have the data that we just received that we haven't fully reviewed yet. And I also have done quite a bit of work looking at the online budgets for the benchmark cities. And for a few things, we've got three different sets of numbers for some of the cities. And so trying to kind of make sense of this and which are the numbers that are the most, seem the most appropriate to compare to is turning into a little bit more of a task than I originally thought. So that's part of the reason we're a little hesitant to give a date because it's going to take us a little longer to sort through this data than we originally thought. So I'm, you know, I would say at the best it would be March. But I think there's a fair chance we won't be able to get it done by March. It kind of depends on a lot of things.
And one of our members is Inga, and she has a full-time job, so. Okay, any other items before we move on to item, what was six and is now eight, which is the Ad hoc Library Planning Committee Report? Okay, we'll move on to that. And Bob is going to just give.
Okay, the, the report is in the packet and there really isn't anything to add to it. So I will just quickly mention some of the highlights as I see them. And then if there are any questions about anything else. Starting at the beginning, I think it's important to note that our goal is to offer services in the near future that can continue even after we are able to reopen, whenever, who knows when that might be. And that will not only allow us to build upon and be innovative with new services and programs in the near future, but also because we can continue with them after reopening, it should make some improvements in our cost effectiveness. This is sort of with the assumption, I think that's correct, that our resources, no matter how much better the city's revenue turns out to be over the next year or two, we will be working with reduced resources. And, you know, that translates into reduced staffing and accommodations that hopefully by coming up with good programs that we can continue and aren't just Band-Aids, but things that can be ongoing, we will be more efficient with that. In the section that was added recently, actually, with the passing of Meg, it highlights again the idea that we need to compensate for staff members that are no longer with us or no longer able to continue for one reason or another. And that this can be at least, or the consequence of that can be at least partially ameliorated by increasing our cross-training. So that if one person's gone, there are somebody else that maybe can't do 100% as good a job, but can at least step in and take on those roles. So if nothing else, that has made more apparent and more urgent the need for the cross-training that is actually part of our. that is actually part of our uh strategic plan anyway. Going down, we're talking about things like the website programs uh and material that's online as an example of uh things that will continue that we have started and are doing maybe even more of now than we used to. As we prepare for reopening, uh we want to prepare for reopening, even if it might be months and months and months from now. And um we want to mention specifically that the service desk, they're going to uh figure out how to reconfigure the modular furniture that we have there, so that when we can reopen, and I should say not when we can, but when we decide it makes sense to, because a handful of months ago, we could have reopened. But we decided that everything it would take to reopen, we would gain nowhere, we wouldn't be gaining anything, and so we chose not to. And but when we get to the point where we're not only allowed to, but we decide it's going to be worth it, um, we want to be ready to roll and planning ahead for how the furniture in the service area will be configured. It'd be an important part of that. Similarly, working out well in advance with the city, the provision of and cost of things like DPE and barriers and sanitizing and things that are going to be part of at least the early stages of whatever the new normal turns out to be as a way maybe of protecting and preventing situations like we put up with last year. And um finally, uh well, Inga is working on a long-term longer-term planning in that regard, that we will um be discussing as a as a group, the board and the administration, and that that will include thinking about maintaining the curbside or sidewalk service. Because I know from just people contacting me because they know I'm on the board and saying how much they like the convenience and the ability to place a hold, go to an outside door and uh pick it up and go home and not have to walk in the library to get their book, even if they can go in and take it off the hold shelf themselves. So I I think that would be a um, I personally think that would be a wonderful innovation, a service innovation, not program so much, but a service innovation to uh continue even after we allow them to walk through the front door. But that's just part of what we'll talk about in in terms of what's feasible financially and staff-wise and uh, you know, meeting the needs and wishes of our constituents. So those are just some of the highlights of the report, and uh, you know, we will continue meeting and planning short-term with a uh view to the long-term at the same time.
Any comment?
Where'd you go, Inga? Did you jump in the water there? I thought you went like this and, you know, woo, down in the water. You forgot your scuba, your air good air pipe.
My laptop, my iPad fell over.
Well, it's a good thing you're not using library equipment, dropping it all over the floor like that.
I just wanted to, um, Inga, do you want anything you want to add to that?
Um, I just wanted to mention, one of the things about reconfiguring the desk is we're anticipating, um, you know, having a smaller staff. And so how do we provide service once we're open with um many fewer staff members? And so reconfiguring the staff in a way to maximize use of the self-check machines and then also to make it um efficient for fewer staff members to be out on the floor, but then also having equipment that will summon them as needed. So that's part of the reconfiguring that we're looking at.
Okay, and and the other thing I I I I do want to mention is there is a request for additional funds because uh because of the staff going on vacation or taking sick leave and the fact that there aren't enough bodies on the line right now to cover the work that needs to be done. So you want to say something about that, Inga?
I know that um the recommendation here is that we ask for um use of the Hiring and Reopening Fund, and I've been in contact with the city manager's office. And uh Nat is nodding his head. I think um city manager's office sees the great need as well. So Nat, did you want to say anything about that?
Just uh just reaffirming our our support. We know it's a challenging time and that the library staff are really on a, have been on a shoestring budget with limited resources and uh due to unfortunate recent events and needs, this this is necessary. And unfortunately, we have a reopening and rehiring fund that can support this request.
That's wonderful. I think the other thing that this will allow you to do more of is start cross-training right away, bring in some of these on-call people that they can, you you can actually have a layer that's too deep instead of one deep, so that if anything happens, you're not just stuck, so.
And it's a good transition as we as we look at reopening, like like we've talked about once, whenever that might be, that will require us to add more staff, both full-time and part-time and what that looks like. So this will this will be a good ramp ramp up, a gradual one.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the interesting thing about Meg, who passed away, was she was the cross-trained person. So she she knew to how to do the acquisitions work, which is what what her supervisor did, because she filled in for her supervisor multiple times when her supervisor was gone. But she also knew how to do the cataloging, and we don't have a second person who was cross-trained in that way. So yeah, that just shows you how even your cross-training plans can only get you so far.
Well, they they have to be constantly tweaked and adjusted as as
Yeah.
as necessary. All right. Okay, so uh.
Marcia, if I could, normally, we wouldn't need to vote on something like this, but since part of it is to request funding through the city's reopening and hiring fund, maybe it would be appropriate, and and if so, I would make the motion to approve the committee's suggestion to request twenty seven, twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars from the city's reopening and hiring fund.
I think that's a good idea. I think it should go into the minutes.
If you think so, I'll make that as a motion.
Yes, I think so. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Do we need public comment on this?
Yes. So we encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom.gov. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. To make a public comment, raise your hand using Zoom. To join by telephone, please dial toll-free eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four, inter-meeting ID one-six-zero-five-nine-five-five-seven-eight-one, followed by the pound sign. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. There are no callers.
Okay, now we move to a vote.
Trustee Felgood.
Yes.
Trustee Joshi.
Yes.
Trustee Petty.
Yes, and we're actually voting on something that's already taken place, right?
Well, the request for funds.
That's what I mean. Inga's already contacted city manager's office about this.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm all for it.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Chair Moreau.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to informational reports, the financial report, and then the statistical report. So Inga, you want to do a quick?
So just to remind you, what you have before you are, we have two different pages that say expenditure balances. One is for as of the end of November, and one is through the end of December expenditures. And then similarly, revenue balances end of November and end of December. Were there were there questions or comments about those reports? I know that there was a question about which columns appear in the reports, and we made some adjustments, again, using this new simpler system. But um we're open to feedback if. Yeah, Jim?
Yeah, I I like the new format, and I appreciate whatever work was required to make that happen. Uh, and I just have one suggestion, if it would fit, and I'm not sure it would fit. And if not, that's not a big deal. But on the expenditure balances charts, if at the very beginning, there was room to add a column for the prior year actual, like there is on the revenue sheets, um, I would find that helpful. But if it wouldn't, if it wouldn't fit on one page or or if it would have to be reduced in size so much that it would be hard to read, then I'm okay leaving it off. But if it's easy to add and if it's easy to still read the chart, I would find that helpful.
So the the prior year actual would be, remind me, what would that figure then represent?
What the amount that was spent in the prior fiscal year.
At that, at the same time period?
Oh, no, for the entire year.
Oh, for the entire year.
I mean, you could do it either way, actually. That's a good question.
Well, it's nice to be able to compare, so you might want the year-to-date prior year.
Yeah.
Easy, I don't know.
I'd be fine with the, I'd be fine with either one. I I don't know if the uh, if if it's easily available, the prior year to date to that same date or not.
If the figures are readily available, I don't think, format-wise, you have to worry about adding a whole nother column. Just looking at library administration, where it says year-to-date actual three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in that expenditure chart there, all you'd have to do is put another number before that in the same column, maybe in red or something, or the previous year slash three-hundred-and-twenty-five. And we would know that the first number, kind of like the weather in the Herald, they have today's weather and yesterday's weather just separated by a slash. And you know that the the first pair of highs and lows is for today, and the second pair was yesterday's. And so you could just put a slash and add the corresponding figure for the previous year without having to manufacture a whole nother column. And uh it might be an easier way to fit it in without worrying about spatial, you know, shrinking it too tight.
It may depend on what, it may depend on what the software allows. I'm not sure.
Okay, we can look into what what the software allows.
Any other comments on the
Yeah, ju- just to clarify that, on the on the revenue chart where it says prior year actual, do you know if that's for the entire prior fiscal year or to the same date in the prior year? Kind of the same question we were just talking about, but it's already there on the revenue side. If we don't, and if you don't know, that's okay, but.
Yeah, I don't actually know.
I I would suggest we do both the revenue and the expenditures the same way, though. It'd be confusing if one was one and the other was the other.
That's true.
I'm trying to think, Mary Jane, can you remember when the Esselstein gift came in? Oops, you're muted.
Think I picked the check up January, really early in January.
Okay.
But let me double-check that.
So then I would think, um, so because the 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 prior year actual for library administration under trust fund is is quite a large number, and that would be the revenue received. And our revenue was, you know, significantly bumped up last year by by one estate gift of a hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand dollars. So I think this must be year-end, is what I'm guessing. Oh, yeah, and also because it's the same for November as December, so it must be prior year actual as of the end of the fiscal year last year.
We picked up the Esselstein request on January ninth.
Okay, so if this was just showing the quarter for the prior year, it wouldn't um be two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-some dollars.
And like I say, I'm fine with that unless others, other board members would strongly prefer to have have it just to the same date in the prior year. I I like to say I'm fine either way.
Yeah, I I I, one of them might be much easier to get than than the other.
I'm guessing it will, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. The year-to-date might not be so easy for last year.
Okay, well, we'll find out.
Okay, good, thank you. But I, even with that suggestion, I still appreciate the work you've done to put it. You have a lot more information than I think the last time we saw this, so thank you.
Yes.
And that's thanks to Francesca, because she worked with finance to get those reports pulled.
Thank you, Francesca.
I appreciate it. Okay, and the last one is the
Statistic reports?
Statistic report, yes.
And um I don't have much to say about the statistic reports. But I'm happy to take questions or hear trustee observations. I was thinking for the December report, trustee Petty might be pleased to see the increase in attendance at adult programs during COVID as compared to last year prior to COVID. Eighty-eight percent more participants. And that just, of course, that has to do with what programs were held and when they fell during the year, what kind of attendance we had.
Yes, I think it was some of those wonderful programs, like the Cannery Row series, I think attracted people from all over the world. So that made a big difference. People who wouldn't normally be in Monterey joined in.
Well, I'll mention, I'm equally pleased not just to see that one month, but when you look at the entire year, the two columns that are January through December, uh again, you see that, I mean, the number is a lot smaller, but the attendance at adult programs is ahead of last year, the previous year. And whereas it's down for the others, and as I've said before, I think that's telling us something about what the um public is asking for. So uh, you know, despite everything, it still shows an increase in attendance of was it six percent, January through December for adult programs? Over farther from that eighty-eight.
Right.
And then in defense of children's programs, we didn't have any until November.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not comparing one with the other. I'm just saying that it shows that even with all of the hassles, there was an increase in the attendance at adult programs. And that, you know, that might be something that would even relate to how we get people to participate in fundraising and and saying, hey, look at all these great things that your peers, you know, you your adult peers, your retired peers are taking advantage of.
Okay, any other comments on this? Okay, so we move to trustee comments.
I can start.
Okay.
Okay, I'm the liaison to the Friends and Foundation. I go to their meetings. And I'd like to say a word in their praise. In appreciation of the folks at the Friends and Foundation, apart from fundraising, some of them are also working, serving as volunteers, sorting return books, the material. They're organizing a virtual chocolate and wine event on the twenty-seventh next month. It's coming up. It's coming up. Just to be clear, only the location will be virtual. The chocolate and wine will be very real. It's dot D Y O. Okay. We'll just have to see how this works out. Like I've heard that with the vaccine, you can't drink 10 firsts before 10 days after. Not a dry, dry period. So it'll work with the rollout of vaccines. So we'll see how that goes. But I do want to appreciate all the work that they put in. They're very enthusiastic. They're good people and we are lucky to have them.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Bob?
Well, I'll just observe that I think we're adapting well to not just new times, but changing times and to some degree unpredictable times. And I would like to see us imagine what the possible scenarios might be so that we can say, well, if this is what occurs, we'll flip a switch and put in our plan number one because we're ready to go if that happens. But if something else turns out to be the scenario, then we will have also planned for that and we can flip switch number two and be ready to roll out. And unlike some other public agencies, not wait for, to find out what's going to happen, then say, well, now let's see what we're going to do. Let's see what we're going to do in a number of eventualities and be ready to move. And again, I'm just looking at packet page 25 where the cross-training is high urgency. And you know, that would help us be prepared across a number of different possible scenarios in the future. And you know, if we're ready for three or four of them, whichever one happens, we'll be on top of it. So I think we're doing good work and especially the staff with, you know, limited numbers. But a lot of things don't change. And so a lot of people are doing double and triple duty. And I don't want anybody to think it goes unnoticed.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, I'm just really impressed with the amount of work that staff have put into thinking outside the box and using this as an opportunity to be creative and offer innovative programming. I'm also pleased to be working with my colleagues here. The library's come a long ways from when I got hired there in 1987. It's really nice to see where it's going. It, I like to see the planning process. It's like we're thinking of all contingencies ahead of time. And I'd like to conclude by saying, I was just stunned to get the email about Meg. I did not work with her, but she was a fixture at a lot of the literary events locally that I attended. And she's going to be missed. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Jim?
The only comment I have is I'd just like to piggyback on Jennifer's comments about my appreciation and sympathy on Meg's passing. Thank you.
And, and I want to add to everybody's thanks. Thanks to my colleagues on the board who have stepped up to participate in all of these ad hoc committees. And Jennifer is going to help us with the survey that we're going to do using the new tool. And Arish for doing the RFID project and Bob for the planning and Jim for the benchmarking and for everything that you do. So, and, and Mary Jane for bringing in all that funding. It was wonderful. I also want to mention that event on February 4th, we're doing an update on the state of the library. It's a, it's a, an event mostly targeted to friends of the library who might get excited about what we're doing and to help us kind of kick off this campaign and try to help Mary Jane and her task as we all try to raise more funding. So it's February 4th from 4 to 5. And it's going to be Inga and Diane Delormier from Friends and Foundation and myself. And we're going to each give a little update and have some Q and A for about an hour total. So if you can make it, that would be great.
Has that been advertised on the website or anywhere?
Yes, it's on the website. It's been, I, I got a couple of email blasts. There were ones that came from the library today. It's been on the city website. I think you're, Mary Jane is going to, was going to go into the MC Weekly. So it's been, yeah, it's been around.
It's the fourth at 4:00.
You can register on the library website, right? And add your questions when you register or just email any questions you think that you'd like to hear us asked. And we won't attribute them to you. But we want to conjure the sense of a discussion with the cast of thousands who will be tuning in.
The, the one caveat is that we can't have a discussion amongst trustees, so.
Yes, it's more.
Because the Brown Act.
Yes, it's more of a webinar format. And so it'll just be us and, right, we, it can't, it can't be a library meeting as Inga said, because of the Brown Act. So it'll just be, it'll just be the people who are, who are the speakers. And then everyone else will participate by asking questions.
Yeah, I see it now, but it's one of the long list of ones, like the mindfulness programs and so forth. I hadn't scrolled down that list far enough, but now I see it.
Is that everything? We, we have to give the AMP folks enough time to get onto their, go onto their town hall meeting tonight. I'd be best to adjourn. Okay, thank you very much.